Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgeville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2024. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, as we gather here today, we take a moment to reflect on this past year. We thank you for your guidance, wisdom, and presence in the decisions that we've made and the work that we've done. We ask for your continued blessing to help us make choices that reflect the common good and build a community rooted in respect for all. We offer this prayer in gratitude. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Abens.
Here.
Winkle.
Here.
Awig.
Here.
DeVries.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Law Director.
Here.
Engineer.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Clerk of Council, here. All right, we have a few meeting minutes to approve this evening. First up, we have the Committee, the whole meeting minutes dated December 2nd, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Next, we have the public hearing, meeting minutes dated December 2nd, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as well. And then lastly, we have the regular city council meeting minutes dated December 2nd, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, those minutes stand approved as submitted as well. Please note, council has also received the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals Meeting Minutes dated November 21st, 2024, and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated December 10th, 2024. That'll bring us to our lobby session. As a reminder, the lobby session is the portion of our meeting in which the public's allowed an opportunity to address council and the administration. Audience members wishing to speak are asked to speak from the podium, and from the podium only, please. We will ask you to begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters pertaining to the business of city council or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgeville. At this time, the lobby session is open. Is there anybody in attendance who wishes to address council? See, head shake and no. All right. Lobby session is now closed. We will move on to administrators' reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under first readings tonight, we have several financial matters to discuss and to ask the emergency clause for. And also, the second reading, 139, is the budget ordinance for next year, so we'll ask for the emergency clause on that as well. As an announcement, the Civil Service Commission is offering open competitive written exams to establish the eligibility list for both entry-level patrol officer class D and entry-level firefighter paramedic class D positions. Testing and applications will be accepted through February 17th. To obtain the application packets, visit the city's website at enridgsville.org. There is a Parks and Recreation Commission vacancy. If you're interested in participating and volunteering for that commission, you can find the application for membership on our city's website and email it directly to Parks and Rec Director Kevin Fugurus. The deadline to submit an application is 4:30 PM on Friday, January 3rd, 2025. There's a couple of holidays coming up, and next week, City Hall will be closed on Tuesday and Wednesday, December 24th and 25th, and also Wednesday, January 1st, in observance of Christmas and New Years. I'd like to wish all of you and your families and all the residents a very Merry Christmas and a healthy and happy New Year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last month, engineering sent out approximately 6,200 letters to businesses and residents with structures predating 1989 in hopes to have them verify their water service material by performing a simple test as required recently by the EPA. We have received over 600 responses thus far and are working with the city's communications coordinator to get the word out, to see if we can't generate a few more responses. We still have a few years for the data collection, but I do want to stay on top of that and keep momentum going. We are moving the Stony Avalon and Mills Roundabout towards the finish line, and we still plan to open it up to traffic this year. There are some additional improvements that we'll likely have to pick up next spring, including the asphalt walking path on the Avon side, the landscaping within the Center Islands, the abutting tree lawn areas, and the North Ridgeville Monument side. Hopefully, we'll be able to perform those items with little impact to the traffic next year. The Maddock Road culvert has been installed, and we are waiting for the contractor to replace the roadway section before we can open that up to traffic, and that should happen in the next few weeks. We have several developments, hoping yet for some dry weather to get a few more road segments in before the new year, including the developments Harvest Point, Ridgefield Farms, and Hampton Place, which is keeping our field guys pretty busy. When they're not busy, I do have them work on some buried investigations and data collections. One of those endeavors includes reviewing our existing street lighting. Currently in the city, most of our street lighting is either high-pressure sodium, which typically has that yellow glow, or the LEDs, which typically have a brighter white or even blue hue to them. Most of our street lights are maintained by First Energy, which has recently announced that they'll only be using LED lamps going forward for new designs. Engineering often gets requests to look at low-lighting areas. We do review these areas and prioritize them with giving extra attention to intersections, bends, number of traffic, and other factors. If you have any other, if you have any areas in particular that you'd like reviewed, please let engineering know, and we'll try to look into that. And that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Director of Finance.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight before council, for your consideration is ordinance 2024-144, which is an amendment to the 2024 Annual Appropriations, as well as 2024-145 and 46, which are resolutions authorizing transfers and advances. In advance of this meeting, I sent council a memorandum detailing each piece of legislation and its contents. I'd like to ask council to consider adopting this legislation this evening with the emergency clause to provide the Department of Finance the resources necessary to meet our obligations. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Please note that council has also received the November 2024 Building Division Report and the November 2024 Water Distribution and EPA Report. And that'll bring us to new business. The North Ridgeville Planning Commission took action at their regular meeting of December 10th, 2024, on several items. The first one being for City Limits. Clerk, if you could please read the Planning Commission action for City Limits.
City Limits, 39462 Center Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700046101006. Owner, Stephen Joseph, 36821 Sugar Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039. Proposal consists of rezoning property to B3 Highway Commercial District, property zoned I3 Heavy Industrial District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of five to nothing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abens.
I'd like to move to adopt.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of project for City Limits. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion passes. Clerk, please read the second item for the crossing at French Creek.
Crossing at French Creek, 5725 Avon-Beldon Road, permanent parcel number 0700019000010, and 0700020101001 and 042. Applicant, Suck Cliff, Dries Homes, 6860 West Snowville Road, Suite 105, Brexwell, Ohio, 44141. Proposal consists of final plat for Phase 1 of the crossing at French Creek subdivision. Property zoned R1 Resident District, Chapter 1282. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of five to nothing with the following conditions. Number 1, tree selection will be approved by city arborist. Number 2, there will be a reconciliation of the excess of tree clearing with additional tree planting along French Creek. Number 3, landscape treatment of open spaces will be more clearly defined. Number 4, collaborate with the city to install storm sewer along State Route 83. And number 5, engineering will perform final review of sidewalk location on State Route 83.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abens.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions about this.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the project for the crossing at French Creek. Mr. Schaefer, you have a question?
Yes, on number 4, one of the big concerns my residents have is that this sewer will dump into French Creek. Is that true?
With the City Engineer, Mr. Abens, you know the answer?
Do you want to answer this?
Through Mr. President, I can answer that. So, the current existing condition is the drainage already goes to French Creek, so that's the natural drainage pattern, so it will continue to go there. But we also are working with the developer to include some public storm sewer that will go through an easement on the south side of the crossing's property to allow us to collect some of the State Route 83 roadway drainage, which we currently do not really have a decent storm sewer system in that area. So this will allow for a public utility through this easement that will improve drainage in the area. So it's kind of a win-win.
But it's still going to add to French Creek?
And it will all be flowing to French Creek.
Yeah, there's a lot of people who, houses like me, is up against French Creek, and there's a lot of concern that it's going to raise substantially the water level and perhaps wind up in our backyard.
As it pertains to the property itself, so, of course, you know, they're required to meet all of our stormwater regulations, and all the post-construction controls will either, will either be below the pre-existing condition or not exceed the pre-existing flow condition. So there won't be any additional drainage that what's currently happening as it is in regards to the site itself. And when I talk about the off-site drainage on State Route 83, a lot of that is already finding its way there, but overland flow through property between 83 and French Creek, so it is already going in that direction. Will it potentially get there a little sooner? It will, but the area that we're collecting in the public storm sewer that I mentioned, I don't feel is in excess of an amount. It's just a small right-of-way area on 83, and it's already going there, so.
And with respect to issue 5, is that going to compel people bracketing this location to have to install sidewalks?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I can answer that. So, the approved plan included sidewalk along 83. They have internal sidewalk as well, so not only along the public streets within the development itself, but also a sidewalk along State Route 83. And they wanted to do some landscaping mounds for aesthetics, and I'm sure for, you know, noise reduction and such. So, in order for them to get the sidewalk in, it will meander, and so that kind of was the question that came up, because the sidewalk is meandering, and it might meander outside the existing right-of-way, so we're taking a look at that in the final approval.
Will this compel people between Center Ridge Road and this development to have to install sidewalks?
They're required to put the sidewalk in on State Route 83. Is that the question?
I think he's asking if other homeowners next to this property, if this project is going to require other homeowners to put sidewalks in, and I believe the answer is no.
No, this particular project is not enforcing sidewalk anywhere outside of this project.
Those are the two big questions my constituents talk quite a bit about, so I just want to make sure that this is addressed in a proper manner.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Is there any additional questions or comments? So again, the motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the project for the crossing at French Creek. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
No.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of six to one. Okay, clerk, please read the next item for North Ridgeville City Schools Transportation Center.
North Ridgeville City Schools Transportation Center, 7,001 Ranger Way, permanent parcel number 0700016104233. Applicant, Claire Bank, then-designed architecture, 4230 River Street, Willoughby, Ohio, 44094. Proposal consists of constructing a new transportation and maintenance center. Property is zoned R1 Resident District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of five to nothing with the following conditions. Number 1, staff will review the final photometric lighting plan for parking lot for compliance. Number 2, tree selection will be approved by the city arborist. And number 3, the approval is subject to recommendations of the final traffic study.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abens.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the project for North Ridgeville City Schools Transportation Center. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing. Item number 4, North Ridgeville City Schools High School.
North Ridgeville City Schools High School, 34600 Bainbridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700016104233. Applicant, Claire Bank, then-designed architecture, 4230 River Street, Willoughby, Ohio, 44094. Proposal consists of Phase 1 development, early site work for the new high school. Property zoned R1 Resident District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of five to zero with the following conditions. Number 1, the approval is subject to the recommendations of the final traffic study. Number 2, a buffer strip is provided along the east property line. And number 3, the applicant reviews switching the location of the new proposed retention basin with the parking lot to provide adjacent residents additional buffering.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abens.
Move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the project for North Ridgeville City Schools High School. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing. Item number 5, zoning code diagnosis.
Review and recommendation of zoning code diagnosis. Planning Commission action accepted and recommended by a vote of five to nothing.
Mr. President, I have a question about this.
After the motions made, please.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's acceptance and recommendation of the zoning code diagnosis. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Schaefer.
What is a zoning code diagnosis?
Would you like to answer this, Mr. Mayor?
I just say it's an odd term. I always think of, when I think of diagnosis, like a medicine.
Yeah, so there was an outside consultant that the city hired to review our zoning code and recommend some potential changes to consider.
Mr. President, I believe that is the meeting that he was not able to attend, right?
Yeah, that occurred right before our last council meeting.
So it's review, essentially?
Correct. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing. And then item number 6, the active transportation plan.
Review and recommendation of active transportation plan and safe routes to school plan. Planning Commission action accepted and recommended by a vote of five to nothing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abens.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's acceptance and recommendation of the active transportation plan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing. That brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. All right, recess is dispensed. We'll move on to first readings, and we have 2024-142 up first.
An ordinance amending Section 8, 54.99, penalty of NRCO, Chapter 854, peddlers, canvassers, and solicitors.
2024-143.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of North Ridgeville to enter into a contract with the Western Reserve area on aging in the amount of $13,050.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-143. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that we can enter into this contract so it begins on the first of the year.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2024-143 in order to get the contract in place before January 1st. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-143 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing, and 2024-143 has been adopted. 2024-144.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6121-2023 of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-144. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2024-144 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-144 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing, and 2024-144 has been adopted.
2024-145.
A resolution authorizing fund transfers and advances.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
The motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-145. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that we can fund our payouts in a timely manner, as stated by the Director of Finance.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-145 in order to pay our obligations in a timely manner. The emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-145 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
DeVries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-145 has been adopted. 2024-146.
A resolution authorizing fund transfers and advances.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to dispense the second and third readings.
Second.
The motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-146. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can make the appropriate transfers to the correct accounts.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-146 for the reasons just stated by Mr. DeVries. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-146 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-146 has been adopted. All right, under second readings, we have 2024-136.
The ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Ridgeville, such that permanent parcel number 0700046101006, located at 39462 Center Ridge Road, be rezoned from I3 Heavy Industrial District to B3 Highway Commercial District. The ordinance providing the appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third reading?
Second.
Correction, this is already on second reading?
I'm sorry, move to dispense with the third reading.
Thank you. Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the third reading for 2024-139. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that we can get this over to the county in a timely manner?
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2024-139 for the reasons stated by Mr. DeVries. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by DeVries and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-139 with the emergency clause in place.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Just to make the comment real quick.
Sure.
Just want to thank the mayor's administration, especially the Director of Finance, if we're working on this. This project that we do every year has gotten easier and easier since you've been here. You make it very clear and concise and easy to understand. I think the members of council will agree with me, the fact that this was a good experience. We actually learned a lot, again, as we always do, and I'm very proud, the fact that we've been able to work with the administration to come to a balanced budget that looks good for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. DeVries. Mr. Abins?